Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of May the 20th. I will note that Councilmember Goforth is unable to attend and is excused. Councilmember Duff is not with us physically, but she is with us via Zoom. Jen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. I'm glad to join you.
Thank you for going through, making yourself available. Item one on our agenda today is to review tonight's council meeting agenda. I know we had a lengthy meeting on Thursday regarding this, but, Council, any additional questions? Well, Mr. Brady, any additional staff information about what's going on upstairs tonight?
Did we want to provide an update on the general plan, the discussions we had after the council meeting?
Yeah.
The question that came up, a thing from Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I'm glad you spoke up, Mr. Freeman. I think we've made a positive change.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to be with you. At our last meeting with Council Study Session, there was a resident concern that was raised about some land that was south of Mount Kallops between Lindsay and North 32nd Street. The existing, or the one that we had proposed place type was urban center at this location. That's that dark maroon that you're seeing on the left image. We met with the residents and the resident group that was concerned with that particular place type, and we talked out different scenarios that would work. One of their main concerns was having a development that was too intense, abutting right behind their rural properties. And so, after discussions with that neighborhood, we identified neighborhood center as an alternative place type that would have less intensity, as well as there are certain parcels on the site that are currently rural residential, and we worked with the residents to keep those as rural residential. So those are, as a summary of the changes, if there are any questions.
Can I just say something? This is great, we've clarified, but one of the things we've emphasized over and over again, and you'll see it in the language of the general plan, the general plan does not change zoning.
Right.
So, this is good, provides guidance, but I just wanted whomever to say, it doesn't change the zoning, nor does it endorse, or, yeah, it doesn't change the zoning, it maintains whatever is currently there. But certainly, you know, we look to the general plan for direction, but over the next 10 years, just want to be careful how we, what our assurances, what people are expecting out of this, I guess, more than anything else.
No, I agree, and thank you for listening to the neighborhood, because I did speak with them afterwards, and they were very pleased with that. But I did remind them that perhaps there could be a minor general plan amendment or something, and still go through the process, so they're aware of that. Did I say it right, Mary? She didn't say anything. But anyway, I think that was important, that we listened to the neighborhoods and their character and their rural area there.
So, Mayor and Council, just so you know, this change has been made, and so if you vote tonight, right now, this change, these images have been changed out on the plan, so the intent is, for the vote tonight, is that this will be changed.
Yeah.
So, can I jump over to, we received a letter from another property owner, KCI Properties. It was a, it's a county parcel adjacent to city. Are you familiar with that? Do we want to speak, is that okay to talk on that as well?
Yes.
During this discussion, because it is, or the general plan amendment, and they felt like they were not contacted or participate in any discussions.
Through the County Island?
Yeah. So, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, so this property was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Board as well. They had come to speak on the property and the desire to change the place type designation from rural residential to a traditional residential place type. It wasn't recommended by staff to make that change at the time, nor did the Planning and Zoning Board recommend that change to that place type. Jeff is going to pull up the map while we speak, so we can point out the piece of land that we're discussing, and then I'll let Jeff speak to the public outreach that occurred up in your District, District 1.
You know, there were two neighborhood meetings about that as well, so I, go ahead, Jeff, if you like, or...
So, if Jeff wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind kind of outlining that triangular piece there, is the, yep, right there. If you can see where his, where his mouse is, right there was, is the piece of land that's currently within the county, and it's owned RU 43 in the county right now. So there was the request to change that place type, as I said, from rural residential to a traditional residential place type. And some of the reasonings behind why staff does not recommend that is because, one is the current general plan designation on that property is large lot agricultural, so we felt in keeping with the general plan designation on that property was fitting, also keeping with the zoning on the land, with it being RU 43 was appropriate. And one other reason, it has to do with the current utility availability in that area, since we don't have sewer service that it currently extends up into that area. We felt that the best designation was to keep that rural residential. There's also conversations with the neighbors about their desire to keep that residential or rural residential in context to its proximity to the Lehigh Subarea as well.
Yeah. I know Mr. Brady and I have had long discussions about this.
This is my favorite listation conversation, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And I will say that, but we did make one change to the growth strategy, because it was a conserve growth strategy previously, so we did make a change to change that to a sustain growth strategy, just to clarify that development could occur on that property. It wasn't that we were trying to preserve it for being vacant or agricultural land in perpetuity for the future, but just to clarify that it could be developed, but it would be expected to be developed in accordance with the place type designation.
Good, thank you. I support that.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, Jeff can also go through some of the outreach that occurred, if you...
Yeah, let's do that.
So, we did have a number of, and I should point out that we, most of our events, they were intended to be in a district, and that was just because we wanted to space them out, but it didn't necessarily mean that residents could only come from that district. We had many events throughout the city. In total presentations and events and booths, we had about 99 of, a different variety of engagement types, and that was in an effort to let people know. But we did have two events, they were both at St. Luke's in District 1, where we invited residents to come out, and we used a number of paid social, unpaid social, out-of-home media. We worked with HOAs to distribute information, and I'll say, it's impossible to notify and speak in person with every resident, but we did do quite a bit of effort to try to let folks know that this was happening, and then when we did know about this property at the last P&amp;C meeting, we did try to engage and have a discussion at that time. So, there was a number, there was engagement in this district, we feel.
Okay, thank you. I know the Neighborhood to the West was engaged in the policy and discussion, because they want to keep it in continuity with what they have in the North Country Acres area, so thank you for sharing that, and I'm good to move forward with it.
All right. Thank you. So, the general plan that we're moving forward tonight includes the change that we just discussed, as well as the changes that we discussed at our Thursday Study Session.
Mayor, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Any other questions? Oh, well, Mr. Brady, anything else from staff about tonight's meeting?
I believe so.
Okay. Council, any other questions about tonight's agenda for upstairs?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Duff.
I just want to make a comment on 7E. I don't have any questions, but this approval is a long time coming, so I just want to take a moment to say thank you to Aventure on Country Club for taking the painstaking measures to convert this, this crime-infested hotel into an affordable living unit. And on the submittal of documents, you can see a dramatic decline in crime that has been happening there, and that is in a result of the development there. They've put in a lot of improvements to the property, so I just want to say thank you and congratulations to them for getting through the process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Council, anything else regarding the upstairs meeting? Okay. Moving forward, then, item 2A on this agenda is a presentation and discussion on the proposed 2024 general obligation bonds.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're back to continue the conversation we started on Pi Day and continue talking about infrastructure needs for the city. And this is a team event tonight. I've got a number of colleagues sitting in the back row who are going to come up and speak to their projects, so you can kind of think of me as the Monday night armchair quarterback. Coach Brady's on the side over here, you can keep me in line, and everybody else will do the hard, hard-heavy lifting. So, just a reminder about the visioning processes that go into these projects and the lists of projects that you've seen, that we've talked about, the many conversations we've had. We've had some projects going forward that are currently in design, approved master plans have played into this, the general plan, community events, surveys, council feedback. We've tried to take all of that into consideration on preparing this, tonight's list.
And just quickly, Mayor and Council, can I say too, is that one of the things we learned from this is that any one part of this, the general plan engagement, or what we saw at our open houses, and what we've done with a phone survey, is interesting, there are different audiences. There's oftentimes we get, the feedback about what's most important can be differing on social media than what it might be through a phone survey, or what might be in person. But I will tell you that all the projects receive support that we're recommending. So just, if you're going to ask us, which is the most popular, well, it kind of depends, right? Was it social media, was it open house, was it phone surveys? And we've tried to take the best of all those, where we kind of saw the trend and where the support seemed to fall for all these projects, and obviously with the Council's feedback is kind of how we landed with the recommendations that you're going to see. You're obviously going to see that we did not include streets, I think I've mentioned that to all of you. We recognize we still have a lot of work to be done. Congestion still needs to be, still remains one of the most significant concerns of Mesa residents, so we need to continue to be aware of that. We have some projects that were previously identified in a bond program that we've got to figure out, maybe with some supplemental funds from our transportation sales tax to get those completed. Public safety still remains one of the highest priorities in our community. Any public safety facility seemed to get a lot of support, and so we're happy that we're able to provide some significant projects in that way. All the other projects you're going to see is really trying to, oh, and the next thing that's most important for most community members is recognizing what is it for me, right? What, I shouldn't say it that way, but what's, what's going to happen in my area, what's next to me? If you're already near an aquatics facility, that's not your top priority. If you're already next to a recreation center, that's not your top priority. But we've tried to represent that these projects are well-represented across the city, and try to make sure that we created a balance between north, south, east, west, and looking at the needs and concerns. So, one of the top dimensions that came to us also is taking care of what we already have, and making sure we address that. And probably the most surprise, I shouldn't be surprising, but it really came forward is making sure the city is prioritizing water conservation in its parks. So you're going to see us use that more and more. That becomes above even playground renovations, one of the top priorities for our community. So, that's just some feedback from what we learned. So, thank you.
So, you'll remember, you may remember, some of the categories we were looking at are community safety, promoting active lifestyles, and expanding cultural and educational opportunities in our city. So, if we start with community safety, I'm going to ask Scott Butler to come up and join me. He'll be talking about the public safety projects, emergency 911 center, fire and medical substation, fiber network, fire apparatus, and safe streets for all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Brady said, it's evident from the conversations that we had with the community that public safety, as it does with this council, stays a top priority from what we're hearing from the residents. And so, we are obviously undertaking several projects right now under various stages of construction. Beth has three fire stations that she's working on, a police substation, a complete remodel of PD headquarters, and not to mention all the other investments that Council has put into public safety. But one of the things that is so evident as we talk about our public safety ecosystem is that if we can't get the right people to the right location to respond to an emergency, whether it's medical or safety emergency, then, then everything that we're doing doesn't matter if, if that first stage, and that all occurs when someone calls 911 and we have our call takers and our dispatchers triaging those calls and making sure that we get the right resources to, to the incident. So, one of the themes, as we've discussed previously, has been the city has undertaken a very exhaustive survey to look at, excuse me, study, to look at how we are handling our 911 calls and ways for opportunities for, to better that process and to streamline that process. And part of that, where will be things that we can undergo from an administrative side, from a technology side, and there's a lot of that that's being implemented and will be implemented in the months to come. But one of the recommendations that's come out of this study, along with best practices in the industry, has been the co-location of our police and fire dispatch facilities. Now, each of those facilities will stay under the same chain of command as they are today, so fire will oversee their, their fire dispatch, police, police dispatch will be returned under the chain of the police department, and then we'll have a separate entity that handles our 911 call-taking. But one of the things that we've seen, and that our consultants and, and others would certainly recommend, that best practice in the industry is to have all of those functions co-located under one facility, so that's better collaboration, better use of space, more cost efficiency, so that we can get the best facilities and the best equipment and, and all the wraparound services from employee wellness and other things all associated with those employees that are working in our, in our 911 center. So, because of that, we're putting forward and had great feedback from the public about a consolidated 911 emergency center. So, we would, we're, we're looking at various locations right now. Best team is undertaking that evaluation, so this isn't a site-specific recommendation. This is the knowledge, though, that we need to find a location within the city to co-locate all of these functions under one, under one facility, so that we can be the most efficient moving forward. So with that, any questions on the 911 center?
Mr. Summers?
I'm not going to oppose the, the bonding for this, because I think there needs to be better coordination between the communication centers, but I'm not buying off on the co-location. I don't think the efficiencies are going to be that much. As a matter of fact, if you're going to trade off efficiencies, it's trading off with something, and it's going to be resilient. If Phoenix has two separate locations for police and fire, both can, as does Mesa, both can cross dispatch if they have to. And we spent a lot of effort, in my previous terms, talking about separating these two out, and why that was important, particularly for the medical component, and now we're talking about throwing this back together. Using this money to better integrate the facilities, whether they're in one house or in separate houses, I think is for a future discussion, but I don't want to get locked into picking a location and building that might not be the direction I'd want to handle. That said, I think it's important that we provide the funding for whatever direction that we decide to move, whether it's a single location or keeping multiple locations, and using that money to invest in technologies for better communication.
Sure. And Mayor, Councilmember Summers, we're glad to continue that dialogue, and we're glad to share with you too, some of the industry best practices. I know some of our neighboring communities have a model more similar to what we do today, but nationally, the national organizations representing telecommunicators and others recommending a co-location model that they think works best, and we're glad to, glad to have those discussions as we advance in this process. But also, just want to reiterate, though, to your, your point, Councilmember, we are talking about a very different model than what the city had in place 10 years ago. Under that scenario, one entity had, for lack of a better term, total control over all of our public safety communications.
Before, about the separate chains of command?
That's correct, yes, sir. Mayor and Councilmember Summers, so what we're contemplating is, even though this would be a co-located facility, you would still have the same chain of commands and the same operational authority that exists today within, within that. So, fire would be responsible for its fire dispatch, police would be responsible for PD dispatch, and that was not the way that we were 10 years ago. And, and we evaluated the pros and cons of that, and thought that having this bifurcated model still allowed the efficiencies that came from the direct operational control by the department, but then were able to bridge the gap on some of the facility needs and other things that we do think would be benefited from being housed in the same facility.
But what we are changing operationally, there will be no handoffs. That's the thing, that the model that we employed years ago failed us, because now we have failure between handoffs, where we have two individuals trying to take the call from the caller, and it creates confusion, it creates redundancy. So while we can keep the line of command, we need to have one point of contact. When you call, you're not, that's the person you're going to call throughout the entire call, and that's where we are not at standard with national standards. And the world's changing in 911. I've sat on the committee, made, helped make decisions for this whole region. The Phoenix system is no longer, right? It's, it's been now completely removed. I mean, everybody is dropping out of the system that was hosted by Phoenix. By the end of this year, everyone will be on new technology that the state of Arizona has procured. So this next generation of 911 is very different than the hosted systems that we once had. So, that whole technology has changed, and it's changed to allow us to have this more integrated approach, but we still want to have, from a customer perspective, we want to have one, when you make that call and someone picks up the line, you're only going to talk to one person, whether it's police, fire, or medical, and today that doesn't happen, so we think...
And I appreciate that conversation, because that's, you hit, you really did hit the nail on the head. It's, I want to pick up the phone, call for help, and have somebody show up at the door without tripping up. That's, that's the most important thing. How we get there is a conversation, and I know all the challenges involved. I was on the FirstNet National Advisory Committee, I've been on the SafeCom Committee, secretarial appointments at a national level. I understand some of what we're doing here and, and the new technologies that are coming out, I just think, and we need to invest in that. So, I'm supportive of the money, I'm just saying, as we move forward with this, we need to think about how we implement that to meet the objectives so that Mr. and Mrs. Smith get the help they need as quickly as possible.
I agree. Council? I think this might be a little bit of a recurring theme. Tonight, we're, we're moving things forward to be on the ballot, but that doesn't mean that it's, these ideas are baked, and that the location of things, or that the exact way that they're going to operate has been decided, it's just, should we present this idea to the voters for funding? And many of these things, I mean, these are capital projects that will take years to develop. And so, future councils will really dictate, and future management will dictate the details of how these things are brought to life, right?
That's correct.
So, to what, to what level of detail do we need to have agreement, you know, tonight, as far as whether or not we go forward?
So, at the end of the day, we're going to, I mean, we can move through this, we're going to give you the list of projects, because at the end of the day, these projects represent some value of cost, right? And so, we have to then present on the ballot, two questions, one related to public safety and a dollar amount, with some, you know, description, not necessarily a specific location, but they need to, I think, have some, and we need to do a publicity panel, we still need to inform a voter about what it is they can expect if they approve a public safety question. So it'll be a public safety question with a dollar amount, there'll be a arts and culture, parks, arts and culture question, a second question with a dollar amount, with some categorical descriptions of what we're trying to accomplish.
So, that was actually going to be my question, is like, how much flex, flexibility do we have on this bond stuff? So I do know that when a city nearby us did a big bond amount, one of the biggest complaints I heard from their residents is that they didn't say what they wanted to use the money for, right? So, I do think it's important to like, list out specific projects that we want to do, which is what I think you've tried to do, so that we can come up with what that dollar amount makes sense. But there is some flexibility, I'm hearing, then, on like, yeah, like how much flexibility is there?
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Summers, I think to Councilmember Summers' point, we're, we're still, as we talk about our communication center, we, we say this with our employees all the time, too, as we're having these discussions, that this is a marathon and not a sprint, because there are certain elements of this that will take years, as, as we look at this. So, to Councilmember Summers' point, we're able to still have those operational dialogues. It, it really does affirm the fact that there are some capital needs that we need on these facilities, and even if we were to, even if we weren't talking about co-location, which we still believe is the right path, we would still have capital needs in fire dispatch and capital needs in police dispatch that would need to be met moving forward. So that's, that's why this project is something that will have some ebb and flow, I'm sure, before a facility's ever constructed, but it's, it's much-needed resources into both of those.
So the voters would know that they're putting money towards a 911 center.
Let's just be careful, we can't blanket every project and say, I mean, when we see the idea, you know, for $20 million, that's what it means.
Yeah, we don't want flexibility on that one.
So, but my point, but there are things like the 911 center, where we are still evaluating sites and opportunities, whether it's, do we remodel, repurpose an existing facility, or we look at a new facility. So those are things we still need flexibility on. Some of these others, like when we talk about the medical substation, well, we know where there's a piece of property, we know what the, it tells us about where our need needs to be, so we can be, I think we can be flexible where we need to, but sometimes I think it helps if we are trying to explain to a voter, it's like, here's the list of parks that are on the list for renovations now. What happens if we run out of money? We may not get to all of them. Or another park renovation may be more important to a council member in the future. Because it's a park, it could happen, but our hope is that we do kind of honor the system of what we try to, we've gone out to the public, we've collected their input, and we try to, you know, recognize their flexibility, but also we want to be somewhat very transparent about how, what we're intending to do.
Right, okay.
Okay, good luck. Keep plowing forward.
Well, that was a good segue into talking about our fire and medical response substations. We, we really appreciate fire management, the chiefs, and everyone understanding the challenge that we have as a community, especially as we get more dense and look at some of our infill areas of west and central Mesa today, where we have, as you all know and have discussed in the past, gap, gap areas between where we have existing stations, but challenges, obviously, if we were trying to locate a completely new regular station in these very urban areas. And so, we appreciate the fact that fire has been very supportive and working with us in trying to find creative and innovative solutions to address that, so that we can get faster medical response service to our residents, but find it in a way that is non, maybe a non-traditional in the sense of, of a traditional station as we all envision that. And as we went through the process of looking at the Station 205 remodel that is about to kick, well, that's already kicked off, it became apparent to us, though, that looking at call volumes, one of the biggest areas of concern has been the Greenfield Corridor. That is our highest volume area of medical calls in the city, and we just had some geography challenges because of where Station 8 is located up by Falcon Field, and then where Station 5 is located in its current location. And so, as we looked at that, and using the great data that our data scientists and others have looked at, we've been able to identify a location that's in real need of a medical response situation that's situated between Station 5 and Station 8. And so, what, what's being proposed is using existing city land at the Red Mountain Police Substation and repurposing that vacant land for a medical, a fire and medical substation, where we would base a medical response team out of that to help address the concerns along the Greenfield Corridor. As, and as we see, and this is where we appreciate the leadership of fire, understanding this challenge, this isn't going to be our only location in the future. As the, as the city continues to grow, and as we talked about, the density in, in central and west Mesa, we're, we're seeing more and more of our medical calls that are going to provide challenges for us. So this may be the first medical response station... station, but certainly, this won't be our last, as we try to fill in those gaps between existing stations. And the size and the scale of these stations also give us the opportunity to be more creative and maybe find infill locations or other unique parcels where we can, where we can stand up a medical response presence in that area.
So, the fiber network, we're proposing some funding on the bond program for the fiber network. Currently, today, we have a project under construction for this part of the loop. You've seen it out here outside the building, that's part of the loop. We're completing that this summer, and then we're moving after the first of the year into completing the north loop, all from our prior bond money. What we don't currently have money for is the south outer loop and around to the east inner loop. So, we've put some money on this bond election, continuing, we've done it on several bond elections, to continue to build that fiber loop, because it's so important to the communications with public, public safety.
The map doesn't look like the city of Mesa, or at least not the whole thing.
It's not the whole thing.
Okay. So, your staff was, the gentleman we hired for IT that we really swung for the fences and knocked it out, the park grabbed me beforehand. The only question I have on this is, is that you said that we're looking to complete that loop as it go packs the Co-Mark Center down south, and then kind of south and west of the airport. So we need to complete that loop? So what's our, are we looking at that at a future bond, or how do we want to try to address that? Because that really needs to be done, too.
Yeah, that would need to go out to the future bond. Mayor, Councilmember Summers, the loop you're talking about was actually started in a, with an agreement with Zayo. And so, they put some infrastructure in for us out in southeast valley, plus I think there was an older city project that put some in out there. But there are gaps, and there are continuity that we need to get into that loop.
Yeah, and most importantly, we have to complete the loop.
Loop gaps, yes.
I'm satisfied right now, anyway, because I've been advised that there's redundancy in that system, but it's still a dead end. And we have to complete that loop in order to, to really give it the resilience that it needs, because it's, it's dealing with the airport, it's dealing with public safety, infrastructure out there as well. We have to complete that loop. I know we can't do it on this bond, but that has to be a priority moving forward on the next one. So, thank you.
And Mayor and Council, certainly, on the public safety side, our apparatus replacement needs for the fire department come to mind. We have several pumper's, ladders, and specialty units that will need to be replaced over the next several years, and we do plan to add several of those for council consideration.
Thank you, Scott.
I knew you couldn't get past.
Yeah.
Nice try, though.
So, on the fiber part of it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, were you, I was-
Fire apparatus.
Well, I was, I was going to jump in there, but, so on Greenfield, we're doing the Central Mesa reuse project on the pipeline. Is there, I see on Greenfield between, say, Brown and McDowell, would fiber be installed during that time while we're tearing up the roadway, or is it not in the right, correct right of way, or?
My, my interpretation of this map, and my memory is, see the red line, that means we need to pull fiber. We already have conduit there. So, if you look down in the bottom at the legend, see the gray that says existing conduit?
I do.
So that section is existing conduit. So all we need to do in that area is pull fiber, which is relatively quick, and-
Okay, well, I see red in the center, and I guess the gray is on either side of it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we don't need to put a lot of conduit in those areas, I think is the answer.
Just trying to save us some money.
Yeah. Fortunately, in some parts of the city, we have conduit in the ground already that's helping us out quite a bit on containing costs and controlling costs.
Okay.
So I'm going to move on to Safe Streets For All and ask Eric Gaderian to join me from our Transportation Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. The project that we're presenting this evening is a project focused on increasing safety for all users, and specifically focused on Center Street, bringing all users into downtown and coming from downtown. With the help of our Engineering Department, over the last year, we've completed a feasibility study looking at the Center Street corridor and what we could do there. We're really looking at reducing speeds and calming traffic, providing a separated bike lane for users and wider sidewalks in certain areas to be able to provide that connection from downtown north to our pathway system there next to Ho- Ho- Com Stadium. This, the funding that's being presented would be the first phase of this project that we've identified, and we'd be focusing on the connection from, from north, essentially north of downtown into downtown with this funding.
Ms. Duff, I know you have questions on this one. While you think about what those are.
Should the committee, the, 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 the SAC committee got a presentation on this?
Okay. Safe Streets For All, that's a federal program, is it not? And so, my understanding is, is that this dovetails nicely and makes us eligible for substantial amounts of federal funds?
So, Mayor, that's a, that's a great question. And just to provide an update, the city did receive a federal grant for the, for the Safe Streets For All program. And what we're doing right now, over the course of this year, is our comprehensive safety study, looking at crashes in all parts of the city. When we complete that this year, then we will be eligible to go after infrastructure Safe Streets For All funding, which then would be eligible for projects like this, or other ones we identify through the study.
So Eric, the hope is, and I think working with Councilmember Duff, is the idea is to use these funds to help be, kind of to leverage a match, hopefully, for our future projects. So, while we're showing $7 million, we hope the total dollar amount can be more than that.
Correct. With the federal program, it's an 80/20 match, so the city is going to have to bring some money to these, these projects themselves.
That's great. Yeah, if there's 80%, you know, federal funding available for this type of a project, then that makes a lot of sense. Ms. Spillsbury?
So, I'm just wondering, as we take a lane away on Center, when there's big events at the convention center or whatever, do we do studies to see if, what the impact of, like, a lot of traffic on that is when there's, when it's down to one lane?
Councilmember Spillsbury, Mayor, that's part of the feasibility study that we performed over this last year, was really looking at those different events. For instance, with spring training to the north, all of our changes up near Brown Road are going to be striping. So when there are events, we can still have, with cones and delineation, we can still have two lanes of traffic.
And you just wouldn't let people park right there? Is that?
They're still going to be parking along Center Street.
Oh, in front of the convention center?
Yeah, just right at the picture that's showing.
Sure.
It's down to one lane of traffic, and that just seems like it would get congested real fast.
Wow.
When there's big events.
Sure. There's going to be a certain level of congestion, just with downtown developing, that's, that's going to happen. There will still be parking along Center Street in front of the convention center. I think that's the trade-off. When you're widening bike lanes and you're widening pedestrian facilities, has to come from somewhere. And we looked at the traffic volumes and are comfortable with taking a lane of traffic instead of parking for that widening.
I just know that we would all like to see more growth happen in the downtown area, and especially this area. It, you know, looking down the road, opportunities with ASU, and really, maybe potentially redoing the convention center at some point, right? Like, really revitalizing this area. And so, then I don't want to create even bigger traffic problems as we activate this area more. And sometimes, it's kind of the worst when you only have one lane. So, I don't know. I, I'm assuming on-street parking on Center is needed and wanted? Used currently?
Yes. Where it is existing today, we're not proposing to remove it.
But by the time you add the bike lane in, that's where the, you lose the lane of traffic.
Correct.
Okay, that just makes me nervous, right, in that particular area, but, I don't know.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Duff. I'm sorry, Ms. Spillsbury, were you finished? Okay, Ms. Duff?
Sorry, I realize there's a little delay there. Sorry to interrupt. So, this is starting at the stadium, Ho- Ho- Com Stadium, correct? And then going south?
Correct. It'll connect into our stadium connector pathway that is just south of the stadium, and heads south into downtown.
Okay. And then it goes also south of Main. So when we look at the total project, we're funding $7 million of this and assuming, or expecting to get the grant in order to do the entire, all three phases?
That would be our hope.
Or, what's the explanation? Okay.
Well, are we funding construction, or are we funding study, or both?
The $7 million would be able to fund a phase of the construction. We wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to fund the entire project from Broadway to the shared-use path.
But if, what, so, yeah, we're just trying to tee this up for the opportu, I mean, at the end of the day, if we just had to do it on our own-
Correct.
Right, with the $7 million, we think we could get just down to, like, second or first.
Yeah, I think, we're looking at different phasing options, but it would, it would probably do close to half the project.
But if we were to get $35 million, right, and $7 million is your 20%, then that would cover, probably take us all the way down to Broadway, or at least to the railroad trucks, so.
Right, right. This, having this multimodal transportation plan, you know, for bikes and cars, is very needed. There's so many people who want a safe pathway into downtown from the canal system. They come into the canal, and then it's jogging through various neighborhoods and everything, trying to get to downtown. Downtown is growing, so to get into downtown and get out of downtown, we need a pathway for multimodal. And that reduces congestion by able to have other modes getting to, in and out of downtown. There was another point there. Also, as far as the convention center, we do have the Centennial feeding into that. Also, we, when we look at our arterials, Mesa Drive and Country Club, as far as bike paths, those are very dangerous streets for bike riders. So, across the city, we've been looking for those opportunities. Where are those mid-streets, that we can have those pathways in order to have networks across our city? And Center Street is a low-traffic street. And so, this is the best street to do it. We can't push it to Country Club, we can't push it into Mesa Drive. It's a high volume, and it's a higher speed. This will be a gent, a more gentle street, coming into the middle of our downtown, announcing our downtown, being the frame for our downtown. So, I think this is a great way to accomplish what we need in framing our downtown, taking some cars off the road to reduce the congestion, and be multimodal. Because in our downtown, we have to be multimodal in order to grow. So, I'm in strong support of this project.
Sorry. So, when we're talking about, like, flexibility on bond stuff, like, if, if we say yes on this, like, this is what's happening? This particular project, exactly how it is? Is there room for conversation?
Sure. I think it just has to meet this idea that this street, this improvement on the street is intended to create a safer pedestrian experience. That's the intent, that's why it fits under public safety, is because it's intended to make that difference.
And, and safer bike lanes, too, not, I mean, not just pedestrians. Because I just, I, of course, love safe bike lanes. I think it looks way better. I love the roundabout. I just, I don't know if that outweighs the, like, nightmare that will be the congestion at an event. And we have a lot of events down there, Fourth of July, and we even like all the food distributions, like, all the different things, like, it's already really crowded right there. And so, I just imagine one more lane taken away, and it just feels like a nightmare to me. So-
When we have Fourth of July, we actually block movement.
Well, right, yeah. I guess Fourth of July wasn't the best example, but, and Centennial actually doesn't feed into the convention center. There's like, no path, you can't drive from Centennial to park into the parking lot of the convention center. You have to go around up to the north. So, right?
To Amal Kay.
Yeah, like, you can't access the parking lot through Centennial. You have to go up and around. And anyways, to this area, you look very confused.
Oh, I guess, yeah, which, if you're coming from the north, I guess you can come in.
Right. So anyways, I just, I, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with what this might do to traffic. I love the thought that more people could bike, but I don't know that it's going to be people who are driving that are now going to take a bike to these events. I don't think that's probably practical, what's going to happen. So, I'm a little nervous about this, if I haven't made that up, yes.
You know, as I picture this intersection, when we have special events, for example, when we have food distribution events, when we have large events at the convention center, when we have spring training traffic, generally, there's a lot of, there's traffic barricades, and there's cones that kind of go in and essentially, kind of limit, you know, do this, do, do a lot of this already.
With barricades.
So I think this is, yes, and, and those types of events, I think, will be more and more frequent, but I think this is not different than what we artificially make that look like when we insert traffic control devices into the equation. And the other thing is that if we are anticipating the post office becoming another ASU facility, and we anticipate there might be increased pedestrian activity in and around, you know, this, this intersection, we probably want to soften the traffic a little bit, and make it more pedestrian-friendly, in addition to making it more bicycle-friendly, so that people that live and work in downtown feel more comfortable being on the streets, or maybe even taking their bike around downtown a little bit more.
And maybe, I think it will take years before people change habits, but maybe people just stop using Center as the way they get to and from places if it becomes congested, I guess. That's what will happen, but it just might take a while.
Like, we've kind of, if I want to go someplace and I'm concerned about time, I don't go down Main Street, right? I go first Avenue, second, I mean-
Right, because Main Street only has one lane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, if this is a more pedestrian-oriented thoroughfare, then I think people would make adjustments.
Mayor and Council, if I could, these are examples of projects that will be funded with the bond money. The larger concepts of public safety are, you know, the first question, or making Safe Streets For All. The actual depictions of them are what you're approving, approving. So, so this, this is subject to change in the future. And you're going to see some other depictions of some other things. And you're not, you're not, that's not, that, these are examples, because before you go to the public, it's, you know, it's a chicken and egg. You're asking the public to approve a couple hundred million dollars in bond package. And so, you know, staff wants to be able to show the public generally what's, you know, what is anticipated to be used for. But, as you'll see other depictions, there are depictions of what's intended. Council in the future will make the final decision exactly how the street will look like in the layout of the project, and it'll come back through that process, so.
I still have people asking where the Buckhorn Bass are, though.
What?
For Buckhorn Bass are. So, my, my point, it's a balancing act, right? It's, it's, we want, we don't overplay the specifics, but on the other hand, we're asking people to vote.
Mr. Freeman?
So this does touch District 1, from, you know, the stadium connector path and tying in Ho- Ho- Cam, and I get all that. What I really is sensitive to is reducing our streets and our lanes, because, you know, that's part of our heritage and culturally, you know, we have our wider streets for a purpose, to move traffic in and out of our downtown area. And I know, a number of years ago, Center Street was talked about potentially becoming a parkway from the 202 freeway, and get off the 202 and Country Club, and then get on Center Street and come south as a parkway to help funnel traffic in. And I get the arterial components we have on Mesa Drive and Country Club. However, I'm on Center Street almost every day, and it's a high-use area. We have almost all, well, a lot of our city vehicles use that, our sanitation and regular vehicles. And I'm really not in favor of reducing lanes, so I would want something that would be more favorable to not only the bike traffic. Now, I've talked, and I've talked to a number of the bike people who use the stadium connector, and they love it. They love it because they can get on further east, feel safe. There are some crossing issues that I'm working with, as you know, on some of the crossing, to make it safer. But they love going down to Riverview, and then west into Tempe, and maybe have a coffee or something. And, in fact, my family will ride all the way over to 19th Avenue using the stadium connector, or the Tempe and the Phoenix Pass, and come back on their e-bikes, and it's just enjoyable. But what I'm getting at is, very few of them want to come south. Now, if we provide some type of entertaining, you know, like, the Shrine House gets built out, which we'll talk about, and that becomes a site to see, people might travel there. But, I, I'm somewhat resistant- But I, I'm somewhat resistant, because culturally, we're not getting rid of our vehicles. And this past week, I had a conversation with a friend whose son just got married, and he and his wife both have two vehicles, but they rented an apartment in the downtown Mesa area. There's one parking space. He's calling me, where can my son park or my daughter-in-law park? And I go, well, let's talk to Jeff McFay. So Jeff helped, and I don't know if there's a solution. What I'm saying is, people are still using Center Street, and I know for myself, and I drive some large equipment, and I have to take up both lanes. And to compromise, that may not happen forever, which is fine with me. But at the end of the day, I, I'm resistive to changing out some of our wider streets because it brings, I just like the feel of it, let's put it that way. So if you can show, you know, and around the Civic Center, my gosh, when it gets filled up for a great event, on-street parking, parking lot is full, people are trying to exit and having one street in and out, we're going to have our hands full. And we're already, we're already hearing, you know, parking is a premium in downtown Mesa. So, you know, when, when the mayor has his state-of-the-city address and everything, everything is filled up, you know, there's not enough parking there, so, at any event. So kudos to you for doing that and filling the parking lot.
I'm never going to do that again.
Well, it'll still be done. But regardless, I get where we're trying to go with this. Don't get me wrong. I just think that we need to exercise caution to do it correctly and don't compromise our street values, because there are not that many people that use it today. And I was there for eight hours today and didn't see any bicyclists, so.
So moving forward, to what level, I mean, do we need to agree on this?
Yeah, I think we, if we can keep the project in, recognizing this for safety, listen, the good news is, while we may not control, we could still try to maintain, I mean, I got to sit down with Eric, but I mean, there's a way to, maybe there's a way, the challenge is width, right? I mean, you could have two lanes, but then where do you put the bike pass and the pedestrian pass?
So, and I, I think we looked a lot at, and I'm happy to share the feasibility study with, with all of council if they want to read through it. The other opportunities we have is, we chose to take, we, we looked at the traffic volumes and historical traffic volumes, and I drive Center Street multiple times a day to get to downtown also. And it was, do we keep the center turn lane, or do we take a lane of traffic? And you're turning out of essentially the number-one lane, which happens all over the country, but we're not used to it here in Phoenix. And I think, you know, our consultant and our staff's recommendation was based on the traffic volumes that we have, that keep the turn lane and, and take, take the travel lanes. But it's something that, you know, we have looked at as a staff. We need to do some public outreach. We need, we need to do more before we get into design, that, yeah, we'll, we'll look at all the different options. There's, there's trade-offs with everything, right? There's a certain amount of space that we have, and we want to make it accommodating and best for all users and, and our values, and we need to figure out what, what, what that is.
But Eric, what I was trying to go to is, what, not along the entire length, but a large portion of this, we do own and control the right-of-way. We're the owners of what's in front of the convention center.
The property owner next to the right-of-way.
Property owner in front of the post office. So we could incorporate some of these with as full, without, and still maintain everything. City Hall, we were having, we were standing in the street lane today, saying, well, maybe we should, for City Hall, maybe we should make this curb look differently. Do we need four parking spots immediately on the west side of City Hall? I'm not sure we want four parking spaces. So I think there's a way that this could be done, have a future conversation with council, because this is a conversation that I think the council is still having a discussion among yourselves about, right? Because we keep having these discussions, not only in the public right-of-way, in the public space, public projects, but also what we're requesting and requiring a private development. So we, we need, the council's going to have to have, keep having this discussion about, because it's sometimes we have this conversation of a private development, we expect, and they look back at us and saying, well, is that how the city does their project? So this is a conversation council's going to have to keep having. I think we can keep this project on, because there's always going to be an opportunity to create safer streets for pedestrians and bikes, and we can have the discussion about whether we're taking out lanes, we're taking out parking, or we need more right-of-way. I mean, those are all our options.
And I'll just add, I, we, this one came to the stat, SAT committee, and, you know, one thing is perceiving the flow of traffic was there, and then the feasibility study that actually takes the data and looks at the data and what is actually going on. And so I think that, based on that, the, the facts and the data, that's the reasoning that this could be happening, right? Like that, this, we can add a bike lane and we can do the roundabout. And so I, I just, as we have discussions, like, let's look at the data and what that tells us as well, and how we move along with these projects, so.
Mr. Summers.
Technical question, that, when do we have to put this on the ballot? When do we have to vote to put this on the ballot?
June 3rd.
June 3rd.
June 3rd, okay. So we can have a little more conversation about it, because I have more questions in the future here on this presentation, and we're running short of time.
So Mr. Brady, when do you foresee us making the final decision on what goes on the ballot?
Well, June 3rd is in two weeks.
Two weeks.
So we've got two weeks. So we have today, we have this Thursday and we have next Thursday.
Here, here's my thoughts, you know, lane diets are a phrase we hear a lot from folks who like to come out and, and politically oppose things. And so I think if this project were labeled, you know, an example of a lane diet, then we'd have a political issue to deal with. So what I'm hearing staff saying just now is that not necessarily, that we, we could still do this type of a, of a, of a project that focuses on pedestrian safety, increased access to the trail system, and it, because we own the right-of-way, you know, past the curbs, there's a possibility that we could still do conceptually this project and have it continue to be a two-lane street.
It, I think there's trade-offs, but yes, we, I think we could. It may not fit in every length of this, because there are certainly sections where we're not, we don't have that control. But certainly along the convention center, the post office, City Hall, Serine, there's quite a few places where we do have that. The Mesa Arts Center, so there's art locations where that could happen.
I don't think that the point of this is to eliminate lanes. The point is to create space for bike and pedestrian. So there, there may be a possibility to have a, that there might not be mutually exclusive.
Yeah. I mean, I think that certainly on the east side of Center, from University to Maine, we certainly have a large portion of that. Even if we focused on that side of it, we could, we could figure out a way to make it work. We may not be able to get both sides, because we don't have that same kind of control of the right-of-way on the west side as well as we do on the east side. So we could leave it at that and kick, and have the discussion for future councils, but not representative, focusing on the safety side, not eliminating, you know, not suggesting one way, not making any decision about lanes of traffic or parking.
I like proceeding with that understanding, that it's not, this is not--
And we'll get rid of the graphics.
Eliminate, you know, be down, be down to one lane project.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
We, we could debate, we could debate this for a long time, and I'm pretty adamant on needing a slower, safer street. When we did our Bike to Work Day, we had to have police escort. Why? Because it's not safe to bike on Center Street. We have tremendous population in downtown, and we have to have the, a mode of traveling about in and out of downtown in a safe, protected way that you would bring your children on. Also, two lanes, it increases speed. One lane will decrease the speed, but it doesn't necessarily decrease the amount of cars that can go by, because when you're traveling at a slower speed, you can, your space between you and the car in front of you is smaller. So actually, you're moving more cars at a slower speed, is not equivalent to the same amount as a higher speed.
Yeah.
Anyway, there's a lot into the dynamics of this and into the data, and we could probably have an hour discussion. I know we don't want to go there. And the safe streets for all is making it safe for all users, and it's a 75% match, and we're like 25% if I remember correctly. So we have to be very careful about if we want to take advantage of that, what we do to the streets. So we'll continue to look at it, but I think this discussion so far is not in alignment with the, the goals of the grant, so.
Yeah.
We'll just go forward from here.
Okay. Thank you. Understood. We'll, we'll keep talking about it.
Okay. All right, I think that wraps up.
Community safety.
Safety.
So we'll--
I hate to end it, but I have one concern on this, and I'll make it fast. $2 million for a fire medical substation. I know this is a new model, but $2 million is not a lot of money. The NFPA standards are still going to hold the medical facility. I'm a little concerned that this is significantly underfunded. I mean, it costs $5 million to build a car wash, crying out loud, but if we're going to have people there, a truck bay, showers, decontamination, medical closet, that kind of thing.
No, that's not what we're doing. This is a medical response facility, so it doesn't have--
I mean, $2 million is a tent.
We own the land.
$2 million isn't going to, I, I think the NFPA is going to, and the standards that come with these facilities.
We haven't been able to find a facility like this anywhere yet.
I guess the question is, is this a brick-and-mortar building? Or a steel building?
We're still looking, we're still looking at some of those options.
Okay.
Actually, fires found a prefabricated option as well.
Okay.
And we've talked about in the future, we may be in a storefront, in a strip mall, because we won't be able to find the land. So we'll look at this, I mean, we can, again, we're just trying to manage the overall number too. I mean, this number can be higher, but I mean, last week, we were, two million, you know, $5 million sounded like a lot of money for renovation, so this is $2 million. So we can, we can increase it if we need to.
Well, if it's, I mean, if it's a tenant improvements, that, I could see $2 million, but if we're going scratch build, I'm a little concerned that that's not going to be enough.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Okay. So we're going to move on into active lifestyles, and Andrea Moore from our Parks and Recreation Department is going to join in.
So maybe we could go 10 more minutes, and then we can pause wherever we get to, and then just pick it up on Thursday.
Okay.
Is that all right?
That's great. Does that sound good to council?
Sure.
All right, Andrea, you're up.
All right. Good afternoon, council. So we have active lifestyle projects to propose next. First two on the list are two pools, one at Eastmark and one to replace Fremont at Red Mountain Center out east. And so this would help us complete our level of service in our pool model of creating access throughout the city. We currently don't have access for swim teams in high school or public swim down in southeast Mesa. And Fremont Pool is our oldest facility, built in '78, I believe, and we've been limping it along for several years, but it's not going to last much longer. So the Red Mountain Center pool facility is much requested by the constituents in that area, and also allows us to continue to provide that level of service in northeast Mesa. The next slide has to do with park renovations. So park renovations was our top priority when we did our master planning process of taking care of what we have. And this takes water conservation, which is also highly sought after for city properties, to do a better job of maintaining our water resources throughout our city properties. So this is four sites, reduces turf, replaces the irrigation system to allow us to only water at night, and also keep turf just in active play areas and not ornamental turf. And then the park renovations, those are playground projects and putting shade in place, reactivates the park. Every time we've done a playground renovation, it rejuvenates the neighborhood, brings people out. People want to experience the new park. We have shade in place, it's more comfortable, especially on the shoulder times of the day and seasons. So it's Carriage Lane, Wood Glen, Monterey, Sheep Herders, Meadow Green Heritage, and Augusta Ranch there. But the before and after pictures from two of our examples recently, Emerald and Kingsborough, were a huge success, and we want to continue that effort.
Mr. Summers.
I was going to say, Andrea, just, there's an asterisk maybe by Monterey and Sheep Herders. Monterey is a pretty new park, so you want to explain what way that's on this list?
Thanks.
Sure. Right, that's not playground. So these are additional facilities on pickleball courts.
Monterey Park through Dog Park.
Oh, and the Dog Park.
So Monterey Park is listed here. It's a new park, but one of the, the, the most requested items when we were developing Monterey was a Dog Park, and at the time, we did, it was one of those items, along with some more pickleball courts that we were not able to follow through with. So the proposal is to now take one of our current retention basins and convert it into a Dog Park there at the Monterey Park that it, that was recently opened. And then Sheep Herders really will show up on this slide and the next slide. So it's both a renovation of Sheep Herders Park, the new playground equipment and fall surface and shading, but it also would include a pickleball court.
Thank you.
And then these sites, in addition to Sheep Herders that we just mentioned, for pickleball court additions. So we're looking at adding around four pickleball courts to Evergreen, Ranch at Omar, Countryside and Skyline. It's been very popular, continues to be most frequently requested amenity in our park system. And we've been working through an online reservation system for courts that makes it easier for people to show up and be able to play and not have to wait in line. So it brings a lot of positive activity into those locations where we have it, and we want to continue that effort here. Indoor recreation center, we are very much under, not able to serve for indoor recreation. Our hot climate, it's very requested, frequently requested for youth programming, for gym, for special interest classes, for teen rooms, all those types of activities that congregate into a recreation center, but we don't have enough of them. And so in the summer, we have a hard time getting people interested in programs when we don't have facilities available for them. This would create about a 75,000-square-foot recreation center, which is similar in size and scale to Red Mountain Center, and our proposed location is Greenfield and McKellips.
Chris, would you like me to wait till Thursday?
Say, wait, you got five minutes.
Well, I wanted to pull up that map that I--
Sure.
--talked to Andrew about, so. Okay, so I, this is in my district. It borders Councilmember Freeman and Five, actually, right there at Falcon Field. So it's just, it's, it's great, right? Like you said, we need more indoor recreation, and so this map, that's really, really small.
We can blow up the service circle one.
I can do the circle one bigger for you.
Our level of service, so it's--
Thank you.
--one to three miles, and then broader is four to five miles. So we have a gap in the middle of the city.
So basically, there's four. We have Webster, Eagles, Jefferson and Red Mountain. Eagles, Webster and Jefferson, I would categorize more as like an old-school gym that we've kind of turned into a rec center. So to me, they're not quite in the same category as what we have at Red Mountain. Red Mountain's like a full-on rec center with a lot more amenities and programming. And so, and I know we owe this, own this land, and that that's one of the reasons why we've chosen this location. Greenfield and McKellips is roughly four and a half miles away from Red Mountain, and when I look at this map and I see a city of 140 square miles, I don't know why we would put two really great indoor rec centers within five miles of each other. To me, it makes sense that we would need to spread that out. Now, I know that we've looked at where we could locate it and where we would even have a place to put it. I've driven around to try to see what I could come up with. I, my, my district doesn't encompass all of Mesa High boundaries, but as you know, my six children have all attended Mesa High. And Mesa High boundaries go roughly from Mesa Drive all the way over to Wrecker, and then the freeway to Main Street. The kids at Mesa High don't have indoor rec centers to go to. A lot of the programming that happens at Jefferson and Eagles are for elementary school kids, after-school programming, summer school programming. When I look at the city and I look at where we might have the most needs, it's not Greenfield and McKellips, it's not northeast Mesa. The, the kids that I worry about at, I would say Mesa High, Dobson, Westwood-- The kids that I worry about at, I would say Mesa High, Dobson, Westwood, those teenagers aren't going to make it over to Greenfield and McKellips. So I just, I can't, I'm having a really hard time supporting $50 million to a rec center that will be amazing and awesome, but is in a wealthier part of town, and a lot of those kids already have a lot of recreational opportunities. I just, I'm really, I know I've brought this up before, and I'm just concerned that the kids that really could use an indoor rec center, this isn't going to be anywhere accessible to them. I have even thought, I went and drove around Eagles again to get today, what if we just made Eagles bigger and better, and we made it be something like the Red Mountain Rec Center, and we made it have the amenities and the programming that youth, teenagers could use and families could use? That's, that's in Mesa High boundaries, actually. So I don't know, I just, I just am really feeling like we need to spread the love across the city, and especially more towards central to west. I know this is called the Central Mesa Rec Center or whatever, but central to west Mesa are the kids that I'm concerned about, that I think are the ones who need more opportunities, especially for this exact type of facility. That's what I have to say.
Mayor, Councilmember?
No, it's a fair point, and I think this is one of those projects where we could say, we need indoor rec center. We are, for a city our size, using, again, that logic, we're way underserved, right? Way underserved. So again, we were trying to save, you know, $10 to $12 million in buying land, which would be, just trying to find something available in that same area, but look, and we're open, if there, if we can find a better location that would serve the areas that are needed, I think that'd be great. We just, there was a dynamic of being able to use underutilized property the city already had. So, but we'd be glad to keep this on, but just say, hey, let's, we're still looking within this area, keep this one on the table, and just keep the study going.
Is there possibility, my idea about the Eagles, like, since we own that land?
We've talked about, we didn't talk about that one, we talked about Countryside again. Again, it's about, it's going to become not just the footprint of the building, it's the parking, it's the, if you're in a neighborhood, that's what's appealing to this, it's a major road, it gets people in and out, but we can have that discussion in the future.
Because Eagles does, we have a lot of property, I mean, they're fields. They're very, very used.
We don't want to give a hall field.
Yeah, so, but there is quite a bit of land right there that I could see that we could at least expand the building or something, I don't know.
Just, while we're talking about Eagles, it's, we may not all remember the floods of 2014.
Oh, I remember.
Okay. Eagles was built and partially paid for by county flood control because it is a very large retention basin that solves a lot of the 2014 flooding.
All those fields all the way wrapping around.
Those are all basins.
Well, I just, like, the footprint of the center seems like it could be expanded bigger. I don't know, maybe that's not the best option, but it's more of the area where I want.
I just think that we're having a future, I think it's, this is one where having future conversations makes sense. We're, I think we're in favor of that, we want to look at Countryside again, we'll keep talking.
So again, this vote then would maybe just be that, yes, we need more indoor rec center, and we're going to vote for $50 million for, or whatever, like, for indoor rec center.
I think that would be a wise idea.
Okay, I can be comfortable with that. I don't know if.
Yeah. No, I like the idea, too. You make a great point, and I think we just say we need an indoor recreation center, we're going to look, we don't, we're not going to tell you where it's going to go.
That's fine, we were just trying to, you know, we went on the path of least resistance, but it may not be the best location. So Mayor, I'd say if, if I can get Councilmember Spills ready to agree to that, then I think there's a good time to pause.
All right, let's do that. All right, thank you. We'll put a bookmark in that presentation, and we'll pick it up on Thursday. Thank you very much. Moving on, item three on our agenda is a summary, current events and conferences attended. Anybody like to share what they've been up to?
Okay.
Okay, maybe we'll put that off till Thursday as well.
So I do just want to say that we didn't get to do it last week, and the week before, we didn't have council meetings. So my list is already two weeks long, so as long as you're fine with me talking for, like, 10 minutes on Thursday, then.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, perfect. I don't, I don't want to just, like, pass over these great things that have happened because we keep running out of time, so.
Please. All right. And I've got my own list. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
It sounds like we're meeting on Thursday.
Yeah. It does sound like that, doesn't it? All right, so we'll see you Thursday. Is there most, all in favor of adjourning? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Ms. Duff, did you vote?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes, aye.
We'll reconvene in just a minute or two upstairs.